Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of council. On Tuesday, February sixteenth, uh fifteenth, sorry, two thousand and twenty-two. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on traditional territories of the Agonquin peoples and other indigenous peoples whose presence continues to enrich our vibrant community today. We recognize and we offer our gratitude for their care and teachings about the earth and culture. We honor these teachings through our interactions today and every day hereafter. Okay, uh, the meeting is now called to order and we will now have a moment of silence. Uh, we'll now have the approval of the agenda.
Moved by Councilor Patrick Adams, seconded by Councilor Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, beginning at four forty P M. Be approved as amended to include item eight point six by law number two thousand and twenty-two zero twenty, a bylaw to appoint a chief building official and property standards officer.
All those in favor? Posed, carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest this evening? None noted? Uh, there's no petitions or delegations this evening. So we'll now have the acceptance of the minutes and recommendations.
Moved by Councilor Casey Owens, seconded by Councilor Stacy White. Be it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meeting, minutes of the regular meeting of council held on February first, two thousand and twenty-two.
All those in favor? Posed, carried. Okay. Okay, we welcome our new C A O Alan Smith this evening to the meeting and he would like to address council before we begin, uh, move into reports. So Alan, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, three year worship to members of council. Uh, it is great being at the town of Kirkland Lake. I've been here for nearly five days now and members of council, staff and the community have made me feel most welcome. I'd like to thank council for giving me the opportunity to be part of the town senior management team. And I look forward to working with council and staff um, to accomplish the town's strategic goals that will result in Kirkland Lake being a model of public service for our taxpayers and a place where businesses want to invest and people want to call home. Again, I look forward to working with everyone at the council. Thank you for this opportunity to be part of the Kirkland Lake team and uh, looking forward to get started.
Thank you, Alan. Anybody on council like to welcome our new C A O? Yes, Stace, uh, Councilor White.
I believe all of us, um, even though we haven't, uh, not all of us have made it in to welcome you, we're certainly excited. Um, we know that you have a very strong economic development background. And so we're looking forward to what you can deliver in our little community and thank you so much for joining our team.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd just like to add that I was in to see our new C A O yesterday. Um, he's definitely, uh, the right cut for Kirkland Lake. Uh, I felt like I was talking to an old friend rather than somebody who's just moved in and kinda, you know, nervous about what's this guy gonna think or say? I, I, uh, I think he's gonna be an excellent fit, the right personality and certainly uh, the strong economic development background that we could use here. So on my behalf, I guess I can be say I'm speaking on behalf of the mayor perhaps. I don't know, that might be stretching it. I welcome you to, uh, our senior team. Thank you, Alan. Okay, uh, we'll now move to, uh, item six one, signing authority policy update. And I believe that would be, uh, Mr. LaCark that would speak to that.
Yes, thank you, your worship and through your council. Um, I do have a report here, the signing authority policy update. Um, with the, um, the new addition of, uh, C A O Alan Smith, um, we have updated, uh, our signing authority to add him on. Um, and, uh, yeah, so have any questions, let me know.
Any questions from council? Thank you. Sorry, just give me a second here. So given the further update, uh,
Um, I'm, uh, Councilor Owen? It's okay, I can read the recommendation.
Okay.
Um, moved by Councilor Lad Shaba, seconded by Councilor Casey Owens. Be it resolved that memorandum number two thousand and twenty-two Finn zero zero three entitled signing authority policy update be received and that the updated signing policy, uh, authority policy is approved and that staff be directed to insert the updated signing authority policy into the corporate policy manual.
Okay, um.
You may call for the vote.
Okay, thank you, ma'am clerk. I just, uh, I'm being a little confused here, but we'll go back on it. Uh, all those in favor? Posed, carried. Okay, uh, we'll now move to, uh, item six two, uh, community grant intake, uh, and, uh, Ms. Sacra, the Director of Community Services will present on that.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to council, February first was the first intake for community grants for the two thousand and twenty-two year. Community grants is something that has been in effect for a couple of years and typically council has allocated twenty-five thousand dollars from the operating budget to community grants. It is a mechanism for various organizations within the town to request subsidy from council depending on what they are looking for to ensure that their operations are effective. What the, the, uh, policy currently indicates is that up to five thousand dollars can be allocated per request. So for the first round for two thousand and twenty-two, we did have two interested parties. Um, one organization was able to complete all of the requirements and I'm currently working with the second one just to have them finalize some of the information that, that council would require. So the one that I'm bringing forth today is for a community garden at the location of the former playground at the Swastika Church. It's the old Swastika school that's located just off of Victoria Avenue is where the location of the playground would be. They are requesting dollars that would be put towards soil, wood, planter lining, hoses, gardening supplies, concrete blocks, signage, a picnic table, things like that. So they're looking to do a, a community garden in the Swastika area, very similar to the one that we've done in Kirkland Lake last year at Civic Park, which was very successful. They have been in touch with the staff members that have been involved with the community garden at Civic in the past and we're looking at doing some joint initiatives on planting and techniques and teaching and things like that. So at this point, staff are recommending that council consider this application. It's for four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for a community garden at Riverside Church.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Sacra. Any, uh, questions for Bonnie or discussion? Uh, Councilor Shaba?
Yeah, good afternoon. Um, how, how do we get the word out about this community grants? Is that in our website, on our website or is there a period during the year that we have it in newspapers that are people are, uh, aware of it, but I'm not really aware of this one. So the question is, how do we get, how do we get the water out to, uh, the people in our community?
Thankfully, thank you, Councilor Shaba, through your worship to council. This is something that is on the Discover K L website. It's right on the homepage. You can click right on community grants. All the information is there, including the application form as well as the policy. We've also emailed the information out to community groups in the past and we're certainly, um, we certainly are able to speak to it. Staff members either from Development Services Office or Community Services Office can speak to the grant at any time. So we have had people request information in the past, so, so they, they are learning about it. We certainly can continue to emphasize that it is available through things like our municipal update and our daily updates on, on the radio station.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Ivanoff?
Yeah, I'm surely in favor of, uh, giving them, uh, forty-seven hundred and fifty dollars at Riverside Community. I mean, it's Civic looks, it looks amazing and I think you've done a great job there. If that makes Swastika a more beautiful place, why not? Thank you.
Any other, uh, discussions or questions? Okay, um, do we have a motion on this?
We do. I can read it certainly, worship. Uh, moved by Councilor Stacy White, seconded by Councilor Casey Owens. Be it resolved that report number two thousand and twenty-two C S zero zero one entitled two thousand and twenty-two community grants intake number one recommendation be received and that council allocate twenty-five thousand dollars within the two thousand and twenty-two operating budget for community grants and that council approve funding of up to four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the Riverside Community Garden.
All in favor? Posed, carried. Okay, and I'll go right back to, uh, Director of Community Services, uh, Ms. Sacra for the, uh, COVID nineteen vaccination policy update.
Thank you, your worship, through you to council again. The municipality has typically followed the lead of the provincial government and paralleled its procedures with those of our own. Therefore, with yesterday's announcement regarding the loosening of restrictions as of March first, we have a revised recommendation for council to consider. And this is what sometimes happens when, um, there are changes in the information that we're able to ascertain after the minutes have gone out and the, and the notes to council have gone out. So at this point, what council or what staff are recommending to council is that we keep the existing policy in place until March first, which was what was agreed upon back in November, that the COVID vaccination policy be in place for a three month period until March first. That coincidentally corresponds with the date that the province may look at loosening restrictions. And then if the province is, um, still going with the recommendations that they proposed yesterday, that we repeal this as of March first. If the province changes the message and therefore the legislation by March first, we will certainly respond um, by ensuring that the policy parallels what the province legislates and will bring forth changes to council at the March first meeting. So as of yesterday, the provincial government did announce that at effective March first of this year, Ontario will do some additional steps to loosen restrictions and that will include lifting proof of vaccination requirements for all settings at this time. So that would, that would mean the legislative places that proof of vaccination is required, such as the community complex. What they then further gone on to say is that businesses and other settings may choose to continue to require proof of vaccination. So the proof of vaccination that is currently required for town staff is due to a policy and, um, a bylaw passed by council. So at this point, staff are recommending to council that we parallel what the province is indicating for locations that require proof of vaccination and we extend this to our staff as well, which would mean that the proof of vaccination policy for current staff, new hires and rapid antigen testing for staff that do not have a vaccination would be repealed as of March first if nothing changes with the province. I certainly can answer any questions.
Yeah, do we have any questions or discussion for, uh, Ms. Sacra? Yes, Councilor Owens?
I'm certainly glad we're going in the right direction on this one and I think it's time, uh, that we're gonna have to start living with this. Uh, but when that first report came out, I had some hesitations and questions about it and so I reached out to Dr. Cornille and he got back to me this morning. We had a short, uh, phone conversation and his only, uh, I don't know if you'd wanna say warning, I, I, not sure how to say it. He's just, we have to make sure that there, we know there's a difference between uh, a vaccination policy for a workplace and a vaccine mandate or requiring the passport when you go into a, uh, a work setting, the vaccine policy, uh, dictates for your employees. So like, and he used T H U as an example, um, vaccine policies are not going away at T H U anytime soon. That's still in place and staff that are there still have to dare to. And if you wanna get hired with T H U, T H U, you still have to prove you're, uh, you're vaccinated. So just putting it out there that there is a difference between vaccine mandate, the passport and the policy that an employer has, uh, has a responsibility to make sure that their employees are working in the safest possible environment.
Any other? Any further discussion? Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have a a motion on this?
Yes, uh, your worship, there is an amendment on the floor surrounding this item. Uh, the amendment moved by Councilor Stacy White, seconded by Councilor Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that report number two thousand and twenty-two C S zero two entitled COVID nineteen vaccination policy update be received.
All those in favor? Posed, carried.
Your worship?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Sacra.
Thank you. I just wanted to take the opportunity, um, just to thank the patrons that have come to the community complex as the only location in town that does require proof of vaccination as well as all the user groups. They, they've been very patient. Um, and they provided a great deal of support over the past few months. The screening as well as the proof of vaccination is laborious. It is something that everybody has to endure to walk into our facility. And I just want to, just to publicly thank them, um, as well as the leagues that work with us. Uh, we actually had a situation where there was a team from another community in the past, um, and they, they unfortunately blatantly disregarded the legislation and the league actually provided a penalty to that out of town team and it was, it was to the tune of twenty-five hundred dollars. So just, just to thank the leagues, the patrons, as well as all the user groups, uh, it, it's, it has been tough for everyone and they've been very, for the most part, very respectful. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you to public, in the public eye.
Thanks, Ms. Sacra. And just further to that point, uh, the one Saturday morning when it was minus thirty or colder, um, I was in one of those mines with my grandson. It wasn't pleasant, but it moved as fast as it could and, uh, you know, we got through it. We tracked through it. We're northerners. We got there. So it's, uh, I, I have seen though that the people are showing respect to the, uh, the screener there and, uh, I've been there a number of times with my grandson. I haven't seen, noticed any, uh, problems in terms of, you know, following the procedure. So that's hats off to the rec department and to the public. Thank you. Well, now move on to item six point four municipal elections, question on ballot and Madam Clerk, could you speak to this, please?
First, your worship through you to all of the members of council. Good afternoon. For, uh, myself, it's the first time that I see many of you, uh, visually. The first time, so I would like to say hello to all of you and, um, I am pleased to be serving the public, uh, in the town of Kirkland Lake with all of you. Uh, just a couple of highlights from the memo, uh, insofar that the Municipal Elections Act provides council with the option to pass a bylaw or submit a question to the elector at the polls during advance voting, uh, or on voting day. Uh, the adoption or decision to include same has jurisdictional thresholds and strict timelines for approvals, appeals, uh, statutory notice provisions. Uh, at this time, uh, staff do not believe that council has considered to submit a question for the two thousand and twenty-two, uh, municipal elections and that the statute, the statutory notice and appeal timelines may not be met, given that this is the first time that council has presented with this option.
Okay, any, uh, questions for our clerk or comments? Okay, then seen, uh, we have a resolution to accept this report?
We do, your worship. Moved by Councilor Stacy White, seconded by Councilor Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that memorandum number two thousand and twenty-two C L K zero zero two entitled two thousand and twenty-two municipal elections question on the ballot be received for information purposes only.
All in favor? Posed, carried. And again, we'll go back to, uh, Madam Clerk, item, uh, six point five recount policy.
Uh, through you, your worship, to members of council, brief. Section fifty-six of the Municipal Election Act, uh, prescribes that an automatic recount is required when there's a tied vote uh, or upon a court order. Uh, this act also identifies that council may adopt a policy by May first that directs an automatic recount under certain other circumstances other than a tie vote. Uh, staff are of the opinion that it's difficult to predict the reason for recounts and that council may still receive, uh, requests for recounts which fall outside of any policy. As such, uh, and given the review of the two thousand and eighteen post, uh, election report, staff are recommending that a policy not be adopted at this time and that the legislative threshold, so a tie vote only be depended upon for the purposes of the two thousand and twenty-two municipal election.
Uh, any discussion? Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, we have a resolution?
Move, yes, your worship, through you, uh, moved by Councilor Patrick Adams, seconded by Councilor Casey Owens. Be it resolved that memorandum number two thousand and twenty-two C L K zero zero three entitled two thousand and two municipal elections recount policy be received and that staff be directed to maintain the existing statutory threshold for recounts pursuant to section fifty-six of Municipal Elections Act for the two thousand and twenty-two municipal elections.
All in favor? Posed, carried. Okay, and we're on a, a roll here, so we'll stay with Madam Clerk, item six point six. Uh, election, municipal election, uh, compliance audit committee.
Through your worship, through to members of council, in summary, section eighty-eight, three, seven, one of the Municipal Elections Act requires that each council or local board must establish a compliance audit committee before October first of, uh, an election year. They are quasi judicial body, uh, whose duty is to receive and make decisions on applications for compliance audits of candidates and third party, registered third party election campaign finances and any by elections during a term within thirty days of receipt. At this time, staff are seeking council's direction to initiate the call, uh, for interest for the committee. A certain level of expertise, uh, in this area would be recommended and as such, staff are also seeking council's direction to reach out to the neighboring municipalities to see if they would be interested in doing a joint call for interest. A few, a future report to council would be prepared for the adoption of the terms of reference associated with this committee and the budget allocation for this committee would be presented within the two thousand and twenty-two operating, uh, budget deliberations.
Any, uh, questions on this report? Um, none. Uh, Councilor White?
Um, I certainly support the idea of reaching out to, um, fellow municipalities in the area. Uh, we definitely wanna get the most qualified individuals on this committee, so that's excellent idea. I look forward to the report coming back.
Um, Madam Clerk, is this a new requirement or is this something that's existed for a while?
As, uh, through your worship to answer your question, uh, this is not a new requirement. It was a requirement in the past election. I could not locate or could not identify if this was put in place for the two thousand and eighteen municipal election. However, I had an opportunity to go through this, uh, cycle a couple of times now myself at previous employment and wanted to make sure that the town of Kirkland Lake did in fact have a compliance audit committee.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate that because this is the first time I've heard of, of this committee. It doesn't mean it didn't exist before because none of us were on council before, so we wouldn't necessarily know. Okay, can I have a, a motion to accept this report?
Moved by Councilor Lad Shaba, seconded by Councilor Stacy White. Be it resolved that memorandum number two thousand and twenty-two C L K zero zero four entitled two thousand and twenty-two municipal elections appointment of compliance audit committee be received and that council appoint a compliance audit committee in accordance with the Municipal Elections Act and that staff be authorized to solicit interest for municipalities in the Tamiskaming region to collaborate in a joint compliance audit committee and that staff be directed and authorized to advertise for applications for citizen appointments to the compliance audit committee.
All in favor? Posed, carried. Okay, item six point seven, two thousand and twenty-two municipal elections, um, declaration of authority during a lame duck period, uh, restricted acts after domination day. And again, we'll go back to Madam Clerk.
Thank you, your worship, through you to members of council. As you may know, the municipal act places certain restrictions on your actions during municipal election periods. This is commonly referred to as a lame duck council. Those restrictions are the appointment of or removal of, uh, from office of any officer of the municipality, the hiring or dismissal of any employee of the municipality outside of any delegated authority, the disposition of any real or personal property of the municipality which has a value exceeding fifty thousand at the time of disposal unless it's been approved by the budget. Uh, the making of any, or the making of any expenditure incurring any other liability which exceeds fifty thousand dollars. Also, again, unless it's approved by the budget. Uh, in two thousand and twenty-two, the lame duck council periods would be from nomination day, which is August nineteenth, uh, uh, after two P M. Uh, to election day and from election day, uh, uh, to, um, after eight P M. to the end of the term, which is November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, it is a standard practice of many councils, including past Kirkland Lake council direction. Delegate the authority to perform those restricted acts to the C A O in order for business to continue as per usual. Given that the town's budget process will commence shortly and that opportunities may arise where council may be required to consider, uh, a restricted act during the year of an election. At this time, staff are recommending that these powers be delegated to the C A O who would be required to report back to council upon exercising that authority.
Okay, any, uh, questions or discussion? Okay, have a motion on that, uh, Madam Clerk?
Do your worship. Moved by Councilor Lad Shaba, seconded by Councilor Stacy White. Be it resolved that, oh, I'm sorry. Moved by Councilor Patrick Adams, seconded by Councilor Stacy White. Be it resolved that memorandum numbers two thousand and twenty-two C L K zero zero five entitled two thousand and twenty-two municipal elections delegation of authority during lame duck council period restriction, restricted acts after nomination day be received and that council authorize the passing of a bylaw to include the provision as noted in the memorandum delegating authority to the chief administrative officer in the event of a lame duck council.
Okay, all in favor? Posed, carried. Okay, we'll give the clerk a, a break now. Thank you. Uh, consideration notices, a motion? No notices, a motion?
Your worship?
Oh, yes, we do. Yes, we do. Sorry. Uh, Councilor Shaba?
Oh, okay, um, uh, this motion here is very straightforward, uh, which is, uh, to have the staff to look into, uh, uh, having a very small playground in Sharp Yews. Um, I lived in Sharp Yews for a very long time and, uh, I, I can remember that, uh, in the past, there was one playground and I believe on, uh, the Castle Lane, northeast part of the town where a playground is. But, uh, that playground itself was, uh, not really very conducive, uh, because you have to cross the highway, uh, to get there. Uh, but over time, we have a lot of, uh, young families now in, uh, in Sharp Yews. And, uh, you know, there is a need, uh, to establish a very small playground, uh, somewhere, uh, in the, uh, in the village. And, uh, I, I'm really delighted that the staff, uh, will be looking into this, uh, based on the correspondence that, uh, we received after our last meeting. Uh, and, uh, we hope we can find a suitable place, uh, for young families in Sharp Yews, uh, to take their children, uh, too. Uh, now that, uh, we're seeing the end, uh, of, uh, maybe I'm too, uh, ahead of myself in the end of, uh, the pandemic, so we get a chance to go out and enjoy, uh, our lives. So the motion is there. So the motion is there. Uh no, am I supposed to read that or that would be the clerk?
Uh it was my mistake, the uh clerk was, I I was supposed to ask the clerk to read the notice of motion.
Yeah, okay.
Madam clerk to read that, now that was my error.
Problem, your worship, um moved by councillor Lad Shaba, seconded by councillor Stacey White. It resolved that the creation of a community playground in Shapuus be included for consideration as part of the twenty twenty-two capital budget deliberations and that a suitable location for a modest area of parkland be identified for same.
Thank you. Uh any discussion on the matter?
Well, my, I have stated my part of the discussion.
Yeah, uh councillor White?
Um being a resident myself, raising children in the area without a playground, I definitely um even though it's twenty years too late, I would definitely support this. Are we uh able to get an update um from what was written to council from Miss Sacreiter? Or would that be something that would wait until announcements were made?
Uh, Miss Sacreiter, would you care to comment or we wait for an update?
I I certainly can for the for the public's uh perspective as well. Thank you, your worship, through you to council. Um an application has been written and received by Hydro One in their energizing play. So they have the a playground in the Shapuus area certainly meets the criteria and we have applied for the maximum amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from Hydro One for playground specifically for the the, we we call the district of of Shapuus in the application for a neighborhood playground. This is a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent split, so council's contribution to that would be around the nine thousand dollar mark. Um the application does indicate that applicants will be determined in the month of February. So I'm hoping by the next council meeting, we will have good news for you.
Thank you, Miss Sacreiter. Um I too have been asking that we we put a playground there and I seem to remember when I first moved to Kirkland Lake there, and I could be wrong. Uh there was some playground equipment uh in that little triangle uh on on government road. It it would raise some safety concerns, but it could be fenced so that access would be only from the village and not and not from government road. Um so I think, I I hope we get the grant. Um it certainly would be nice that the children there don't have to walk into town or walk into Kinross Park to have uh have the same amenities that everybody else does in town, so.
They'll call the question, called the motion.
Yep. So, madam clerk, you want to read the uh?
Would like to read the motion again?
Yes, please, and then I'll call.
Problem. Moved by councillor Lad Shaba, seconded by councillor Stacey White, be it resolved that the creation of a community playground in Shapuus be included for consideration as part of the twenty twenty-two capital budget deliberations and that a suitable location for a modest area of parkland be identified for same.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. We will now go to introduction and reading.
Uh just that uh item eight point three is a conflict of interest, I apologize.
Eight point three, uh did uh madam clerk, could you dearly note that councillor Patrick Adams? Oh, yeah, councillor Patrick Adams has declared a conflict of interest on item eight point three, which is a sale of land to Kirkland Lake Gold, um his employer. Thank you.
Your worship, through you, to councillor Patrick Adams, can you state the uh your your nature of your conflict, please? I will.
Of Kirkland Lake Gold.
You're an employee of Kirkland Lake Gold, okay. It has to come through, it has to come through you, uh councillor Adams, as you're the one who's making the declaration, that's why I had to repeat.
Yep. Thank you, uh madam clerk, for keeping us honest. Okay, um. Now councillor Adams, you've thrown me off my ballgame again and I'm I'm lost. You you should know better when I chair a meeting. Okay, um. Okay. Bylaw. Who, madam clerk, can you?
Absolutely, can give you a hand, your worship?
Yes, uh.
Twenty twenty, uh twenty twenty-one eighty-five. Uh uh moved by. Yes, eight point one. By councillor Patrick Adams, seconded by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved. I'm sorry, I cannot, uh I have to find a new se- a new mover. Uh moved by councillor Lad Shaba, seconded by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready. Third, actually, no, this is a different bylaw. Are we at eight one?
It's contagious, madam clerk.
It it really is, I'm sorry. Uh moved by councillor Patrick Adams, seconded by councillor Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready, third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty twenty-one eighty-five being a bylaw to authorize a franchise agreement between the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake and Enbridge Gas Inc. And just to provide council with a uh a quick update on this, uh this is the third reading of uh a bylaw that had previously received two readings uh which required, was a requirement of Enbridge in order for uh the approval process to move forward with the third reading.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, we'll now move to bylaw. Number twenty-two dash oh one six, and I'll ask madam clerk to read that, please.
Moved by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by councillor Casey Owens, be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty twenty-two, twenty-two zero sixteen being a bylaw to authorize and execute the collective agreement between the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake and Q P Canadian Union of Public Employees Local twenty-six.
Um councillor Shaba, do you have a question or are you just voting?
No, no, I just uh I just uh I just have a housekeeping item for uh consideration, I don't think is would be uh pretty much uh a big, a big deal. Yes, I read through the uh collective agreement and uh I looked at article six, which is about arbitration. Uh maybe uh next collective agreement, the both parties will look at changing the word. Uh they have three um arbitrator chair uh chairman to change that to chair. So that would be article six on arbitration, article page fifty-four of that, I reference chairman. Uh I think they should look positively into changing that next time around. Just uh my suggestion to chair, set up chairman, because we do have a a lot of uh ladies now being arbitrators. Thank you.
Um councillor, uh well, actually, madam clerk, can we amend that or do we have to go with what's presented? And if the answer is we have to go with what's presented, then I will ask councillor Shaba if he can live with the wording that's there. So first, uh madam clerk.
Your worship, uh through you to uh councillor Shaba, I I note your uh housekeeping uh require uh or request. Uh I will ensure that the director of corporate services aware. At this time, uh the agreement will be present, uh will be voted upon as presented.
Uh yeah, I have no problems with what it as presented, I'm just uh uh recommending that for future uh collective agreements coming up, that the both parties should consider that wording to be very much uh inclusive of uh everybody uh in our society. So I I mean, I I dealt with uh something similar uh uh in my uh previous employment, and we have to change that to be very inclusive. That's what I'm asking for for next time around.
Thank you, uh councillor Shaba, and that was a very good catch. It's not something I would have caught. So, uh I will now call a vote, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Um item eight point three and I'll ask uh councillor Adams to uh uh mute his, leave the meeting, mute his system, whatever. Thank you. Uh okay, um, madam clerk, could you read bylaw number twenty-two dash zero one seven?
Certainly, your worship, moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto, bylaw number twenty-two oh seventeen, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of parts one, two, three and four, fifty-four R six, two, three, five to Kirkland Lake Gold Limited. And may I just add a note that this is a housekeeping item. Uh this mo- uh this bylaw is coming back to you as the name of the corporation was uh incorrectly identified in the previous bylaw.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. Now, how do we get Patrick back? Oh, okay, good, thank you. Um. Bylaw number twenty-two dash zero one eight, could you please read that, uh madam clerk?
Absolutely, your worship, moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba. It resolves that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk and seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-two zero one eight, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement with her majesty, the queen in right of Ontario, as represented by the minister of Northern Development, Mines, Natural Resources and Forestry for the Northern Ontario Resource Development Support, Nords Fund.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, bylaw number twenty-two dash zero one nine, uh madam clerk, could you please read that?
Absolutely, moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba, be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-two zero one nine, being a bylaw to delegate administrative powers to the chief administrative officer in the C A O.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, questions from council to staff?
Oh, uh.
Sorry.
Your worship, there's another i- item, item eight point.
It's six.
Would you like to read the recommendation?
Could you please read that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Moved by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by councillor Patrick Adams, be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-two zero two zero, being a bylaw to appoint a chief building official and property standards officer for the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. Yeah, okay. Now we can move to questions from staff.
No.
No? Why not?
I think I see eight eight. Chief building officer and property standard, no, am I?
That's what we just passed.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Your worship, there are no questions from council to stop this evening.
Okay, and uh no notices, a motion? None noted? Uh councillors' reports. Yes, councillor Owens.
Hey, so we've been at this for almost three years now and council and staff have gotten a lot of criticism on social media and Facebook from know-it-alls. Uh I I'm pretty sure these know-it-alls have never actually read or know that the Ontario Municipal Act exists and that we're bound by what that act says and we have to follow proper procedure. I haven't spoken much publicly about these comments. I don't engage on social media, that's not my thing. I uh I I'd rather work around a table here and work with staff. Uh but unfortunately, staff have wrongly taken the brunt of this misguided, downright wrong bullying tactics by certain members in a community, and for this I apologize. Should have stepped up before, but for whatever reason, I haven't, so I apologize for that. But let's be honest. If you can't figure out where to stop when a crosslight or a crossing public crosswalk is flashing, because you can't see the triangles on the road, because we do live in Northern Ontario and it is February, there's snow and ice on the road, then I highly question why you have a driver's license, so. But again, that's not the point I'm trying to make tonight. It it's a good point, though. So last week, uh last Tuesday evening, my partner and I had to call nine one one because as Matt was going into the neighbor's house to feed the cats, he walks into a house in a garage that's full of smoke. And the houses are pretty close, so um we called nine one one. We called just after, it was probably about five forty-three, five forty-four, we called nine one one dispatch and four minutes later, the fire truck showing up. Two firefighters get out of the truck. About a minute or so later, volunteers show up on scene and it it was, if it wasn't so close to the house, it like to our house, it was nice to see these this team of people working together to to get the situation under control. And rather quickly, they averted what could have been a disaster for that homeowner, but for our house as well. Uh like, had this gone on longer, our house, the house would have burnt and ours might have been swallowed quickly. So for that, uh there's a heartfelt thank you that goes out to the men and women of the K L uh firefighters, the full-time and the volunteers for for doing their job. This council and the ones before us have taken a lot of flak because we've got a full-time fire department. But I tell you, when you call nine one one because your house or neighboring house or whatever is on fire, it's really comforting to know that they're there very quickly. They do their job and they do it well. They worked as a team and they managed to save that house but probably uh and other houses in town like the one on Main Street a couple of weeks ago, so, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Owens. Uh councillor Shaba?
Yeah, thank you very much. Um. I know there's a lot going on in the country right now with the protests in Ottawa and everywhere. Uh but I just want to bring this down to uh uh local level uh to really express uh my appreciation to uh the healthcare support and the staff uh of Tamiskaming. I mean, they've done a wonderful job since the beginning of this pandemic. Uh there are heroes and I just don't want that to be lost in the shuffle of things. So they've done a wonderful job to get us to where they are, where we are now, so uh you know, shout out and thank you very much to the health unit people and hospital staff, nurses and whatnot. Uh really owe you uh a great deal. Thank you very much.
Thanks councillor Shaba. Councillor White?
Seems to be the night of uh congratulations to staff. I also uh wanted to actually thank Laura DeRell and whatever staff contributes to our updates uh that we receive in emails. Uh many people don't know this, but uh council and staff don't get to speak with each other very often. Matter of fact, most of it's done every two weeks at this table or our respective tables at home. Um and the work that Laura and her team does to keep us in the loop is just exceptional. We get to know and see the faces of new staff and the goings-on at administration. And for that, I'm really, really thankful for all of her work, so.
Thank you, councillor White. Okay, um just to add what councillor Owens said, um for thirty-five years, I was a reporter in this town. And as a reporter in this town, I uh covered too many uh major fire incidents, major car accidents, uh um uh labor uh accidents and we have top-notch um firefighters, paramedics and police officers, and we're very fortunate. And um exactly what uh councillor Owens said, the first firefighters to arrive at the scene are the professional firefighters. And that can be all the difference of catching the fire before it's out of control. Um the the volunteers, they leave their jobs, uh leave their families. And uh, you know, I I I covered fires that, you know, it was thirty below and it's windy and 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 uh those firefighters are there through it all and uh and the same with the the O P P, you know, I've been out on the highways and and there's no shelter and there's no wind and there's me. and the same with the O P P, you know, I've been out on the highways and there's no shelter and there's no wind and there's major accident and they're doing their bit to to save people's lives. And I don't think that we think of that often enough. In fact, when the O P P first took over many years ago, I remember people complaining that there were too many police in town. There's too many police showed up when somebody phoned and I thought, wow. If I phone the police, I need the police. Why would I complain if too many showed up? I mean, isn't that a good thing? So I think, I think we're very fortunate in Kirkland Lake to have the quality of first responders that we have. And they have not slowed down or changed or quit during the pandemic. They've kept, kept going. So thank you very much. Okay.
Your worship?
Yes.
A recommendation to accept the reports.
Verbal reports, yes.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Stacey White. Be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay. We will now have a ten-minute break. And Madam Clerk, tell me if I'm not doing this correctly.
There's no, there's no break, your worship. We're going into closed session.
Yeah, well. Okay. Traditionally, we've always had a break between like a recess. But if that's not legal, we won't do it.
If you would wish to pursue a recess at this time, that's fine as well.
Is that like within our?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm suggesting a five-minute recess at maximum. Okay?
So council will reconvene at five thirty-seven P M.
Yes, thank you.
No problem.
So we are still live. Are we going to shut that off before we go into in camera?
Your worship, through you to councillor White, we actually have to read the recommendation to move into closed session.
Okay, thank you.
According to my watch, we are back from recesses. Are you present, councillor Ivanoff? Okay, we'll wait for councillor Ivanoff to return. So this is an actual motion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I'll go ahead and read in the motion, your worship. Moved by councillor Patrick Adams, seconded by councillor Ladd Chaba. Be it resolved that council adjourn in camera pursuant, pursuant to section two thirty-nine two of the municipal act two thousand and one as amended at five thirty-seven P M for the following reason. Item thirteen point one being a matter pertaining to labor relation or employee negotiation.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you read the?
Moved by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Be it resolved that council reconvene at five forty-four P M.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. There is no matters arising from the closed session this evening. We'll now have the confirmation bylaw, Madam Clerk.
Certainly, your worship, moved by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by councillor Stacey White. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered pass signed by the mayor and clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-two twenty-one being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held on February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. Can you read the adjournment, Madam Clerk?
Certainly, your worship, moved by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by councillor Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that this regular meeting of council do now adjourn at five forty-five P M.
All in favor? Opposed. Okay, this concludes the regular meeting. Thanks for putting up with all my inability to read. I'm getting older. I need bigger print, I think. So, thank you very much and have a good evening. Take care, people.